Good evening to everyone and welcome. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the East Bridgewater Planning Board for Monday, May 20, excuse me, July 21st, 2025. We'll call a meeting to order at 7:09 PM. I apologize for the slight delay. We have with us, acting on behalf of the board tonight, four of our regular members, Rachel Tedesco, our vice chairman Roy Gardner, Mr. Miles Heager, myself Kevin Riley, chairman, and our associate member Yvonne McCray. Number of matters on the agenda tonight, all of which are essentially in the nature of discussion. We do have minutes available for two meetings. Those are May 19th in 2025 and June 2nd. They were only recently distributed, so if people need additional time and would like to put that off until the next meeting, we can certainly do that. Other than that, chair would entertain a motion to waive the formal reading of those minutes and approve them in the form that was presented.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
A motion is made by Mr. Heager to approve those minutes for May 19 and June 2. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
That's seconded by Mrs. McCray. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing not all those in favor of approval of those minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Any unanimous vote of all members and the associate member present and voting. So Rachel, those are good to be signed.
Yeah, sign.
Perfect. Couple of items, as I say, for discussion. One with respect to D on the agenda, that's Leila Estates. I don't know that there's anyone here. We are, okay. Just to bring you up to date, Mr. Macy has communicated with the office. Mr. Macy has provided us with evidence that National Grid does have this under consideration. It is in their hands at this point, their engineering. So we're sort of at their mercy, and as you may or may not know, they're not necessarily the fastest folks on earth. But he has followed through and done, you know, his portion of it to this point, and he's given us names and contacts for the folks at National Grid, so we can follow it that way.
Okay, so when you say in consideration, is it denied?
No, I mean, I think it's just, it's just in their engineering, you know, section, and they have to, you know, they'll design it and, you know. Once that, once that process has taken place, then it can actually be constructed.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
So chairman, if I could.
Yeah, of course.
Just for your information, the documentation that we received over the last week or so, you're free to get a copy of if you wish to. All you gotta do is make a request to the office and they'll provide it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Good?
I'm good, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Next on the agenda is a discussion with regard to Townhouse Commons. Anybody present here wants to kind of give us a sense of what's going on? And if you come up to the table, make yourselves comfortable, identify yourselves and...
I'm sorry, you're going in? You're coming in. Hi.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi.
Hello.
You might have to speak up, I can't hear you very well.
Okay. Just identify yourself for the record, please, and then just let us know what's...
I'm Joyce Zimmerman from 293 Central Street.
And I'm Kathy McLaughlin from 291 Central Street.
And why don't you let us know, ladies, what's going on?
Well, one of our neighbors who was originally on the board received a letter stating that, and I believe in a butter, I'm not sure who it is, had some concerns about trees that were removed on the right side of our parking area. We had to have some tree work done, which was pretty extensive...
Mr. Chairman, I gotta interrupt just a minute here.
Sure.
Can we just, for point of order and information for everyone here, are you actually representing Townhouse Commons?
I guess we are, yes.
Residents of Townhouse Commons?
Unfortunately, Juanchi Adrick, who usually does that, isn't well right now, so we said we would...
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, because the address alone doesn't, doesn't make that clear, so, okay.
Okay.
We're good.
So that's, that's pretty much what I understand it to be. So we're here to see what the issue is and what needs to be done. As I said, we had, what date was this? It was in April. We had Triple D Arborese come out and look at all the trees surrounding the back parking lot, and he determined that there were quite a few that were really dangerous and fear of them coming down and either, you know, we had an issue with, one of the cars that we had there, a tree did come down and totaled one car and then severely damaged another. So we were really concerned about maybe people walking back there, and that's why we initiated Triple D to come out and give us, give us a perspective on what he thought needs to come down.
So trees were actually removed, not just trimmed?
Yes, they were removed.
Okay. And all trees, some trees?
Some trees, only the ones that were deemed really dangerous, rotting at the bottom or rot in the middle that in a storm they could possibly break off and come down. He did the whole perimeter of the driveway, and that's what he determined. He marked them with an X and took them down.
To the best of your knowledge, those trees were on the Townhouse Commons?
To the best of my knowledge, yes. Yep.
So Roy, do you go back that far?
Yes, I do.
Oh, God, love you. So from, from my knowledge, there was a decision of the Board of Appeals back in 1987, which affected this property, and there was likewise a site plan approval from this board back in that timeframe. And Roy, if, I know that the ZBA decisions are there, I'm not, it appears that there was some considerate, or some condition, rather, with respect to the site plan approval, that there be trees, but you perhaps would...
Yeah, so there's always a requirement since the original site plan approval, it was done back in the 80s, that there be a screening, set of screening trees along the property lines.
I couldn't hear him.
So certainly some of those have been removed, because I took a quick look at that a few days ago.
She can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Okay. So there's a requirement under the permits that were issued for Townhouse Commons, that there be a screening set of vegetation along the property line.
We weren't aware of that.
So what we'll need to have done is, is that to stay in compliance with that special permit and the permits issued for Townhouse Commons, is that some vegetation is going to need to be replaced.
Okay.
So suggestion would be that you speak with someone who could appropriately determine what the best screening vegetation would be.
Okay.
Because there is residence one abutting directly behind the parking area.
Yes, yeah, well...
My understanding is several of the trees that were taken down are between those houses that are behind that parking area and where that parking area is on Townhouse Commons.
Okay, do you know exactly where the area would be that needs to be?
Well, the perimeter from, from the right-hand side where the former parsonage used to be for the church that's now owned by a private party, and the houses behind that...
So on the right side, would you say, of the parking area?
It'd be the right side, and I think the backside part of it's on the back.
The entire backside or just partial?
I think wherever the trees were removed from, something needs to go back there.
Okay.
I recognize that, that I think a lot of the trees that were planted over 30 years ago now, probably have passed their lifetime.
Yes.
So it probably made sense that they had to be removed.
It did, yeah.
But something needs to go back in their place.
Okay. Is there any particular type of vegetation that they would be happy with, or...
I myself, I don't think we can recommend specific vegetation, but you could always contact the DPW and ask them a question of what the, the best long-term vegetation would be for areas. I mean, part of the problem we have, along with street trees and any parking areas, is that a lot of the various trees you can plant are not really salt tolerant, and if you salt your parking area, salt the streets and salt your driveways.
Okay.
That doesn't go real well with, with the trees. That may be why the trees didn't last as long as they probably should have.
Okay.
But I would touch base with DPW, because they maintain a list of, of the trees that have, are as hot as they can get in areas where you use salt and you have the, the issues with snow removal and all of that.
Okay. All right, we'll do that, we'll check with the DPW, and I'll also check with Triple D, the people who took the trees down, and determine exactly which trees were taken down and replace those.
Yes, I would say wherever trees were taken down, something needs to go back in their place.
Okay.
And whether it be trees, I mean, a lot of people use arborvitae and things of that nature to screen it, if the, if the desire is simply to, you know, have a separation, you know, from, from abutters, I mean, that's, that's a way to, to go, you know. Somebody, yeah, somebody in the back, yes ma'am, more than welcome to...
Joanne Snow, 48 Pleasant Street, so we're actually in the abutters that, where the trees were taken down.
Okay.
So it's not specifically the trees that they took down, it was, there was originally a whole row of arborvitae across the whole property line and then up the side, and there, there still is the other, there is another whole row on the other side that is still standing, those are great. But over the years, like, one at a time, they kind of just, you know, the trees just died, and I don't know what happened to the ones that weren't, the ones abutting us, but those are all gone too. But there were, there were trees all around. But then there were also other trees that had grown in between, so it wasn't quite so, you know, you know, blatant that the, you know, not that we have anything against the commons, they look great, but it's just like now, we're just like looking at a blank part of a parking lot. But, you know, originally, I mean, it's, it's in the conditions that there were evergreens. Like I said, there are evergreens that are on the right side of looking for my house. The ones that are on the right side going down to Central Street are still there, but the other whole row between us and the other ones between, I think it's 33 and most of that, I don't know where they are, but those are all missing too, so that, so that's what was, that was there, was there before were evergreens, like arborvitae or some type, I'm not sure exactly, but you can see, like I said, the remaining row, do you know what, you know where I'm talking, the one that's there? I think it's like the, the music school there, it's between that and the conus there, so that was what we, so when they cut all those other trees down, it made it more, you know, open, so we were saying, like, except that they stole what was originally there and that the conditions when Mr. Badger built that, he input that, is that those trees were gonna be there. And we've lived, but we lived in a front before, but now we live in the back, so now it's, now it matters.
So, so it sounds like, ladies, you know, what I was just saying, you know, an arborvitae screen or something of that nature would be, would be appropriate, you know, here? So...
Just a question for you, if we do, or it's recommended to do the arborvitae's, do we need to check back with you to see if everything's copasthetic, if...
From, from my perspective, the only thing I would say is that, again in August, by somewhere, what is it? Middle of September is our meeting, September 15th. If you are satisfactory to the board, they, you know, you guys just advise the office, you don't necessarily have to come back here, that we have a plan, here's what we're going to do, and now you are more than welcome then to check with the office and see if something has been provided, and if so, you know, if you have any issue with that, let us know. We'll try to keep a dialogue going here and, and make sure that the issue gets addressed to everybody's satisfaction. Fair enough?
I think so, yeah.
Is that okay?
Okay.
Yeah, that's all right.
Okay, so we'll put it on the agenda for September 15th, and if in the meantime you guys with the landscaper or what have you have developed a plan, just file out with the office, submit a letter, an email, whatever it might be, with the office, let us know what's going on, and then, you know, if you want to walk out in the back, talk to the abutters and just let them know what's going on, keep a, keep a good dialogue going, and hopefully that'll be that.
Sounds good, very good, thank you.
Anything else from the board? Any other questions or thoughts?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next matter on, is for discussion, is the property at Brookway, the relocation of the driveway area. And basically, just for introduction purposes, we did approve a plan providing for the creation of Brookway at a particular location. It looks like that the development of a driveway to serve the residence that is being planned in the rear would have some impact upon existing trees and such along the property line, so the idea is to potentially move the driveway to an area which appears to be outside the, the existing right-of-way or the, the approved right-of-way. So Sarah, if you will, identify yourself and give us a little...
My name is Norman Smith, and I'm the owner of Three Brookway in 374 Plymouth Street. And when we got the approval to put in the development there, the one lot subdivision, we had a road that was engineered by Silver Engineering, they put it in, and Carol Jones, who was the abutting neighbor, actually mentioned last August that she was concerned about the trees that buffered her property from the roadway that we were putting in the, the driveway. And at that time, I came and went to the planning board to ask if we could move the driveway, and I got an email back that said we could move the driveway probably to the far right of where Brookway is, which was 40 feet from her property line, and, and that would probably save the trees. Well, Silver Engineering came out and staked out the property, and when they staked the property out, Carol Jones, the neighbor, was deeply concerned that we were very close to those trees. Those trees are elderly trees, they're old maples and hickory trees, and there is no doubt that excavating in there is gonna disturb the roots of those trees, those surface roots that are really important, and it could kill or impact those trees. Yet we have enough room where we could move it just outside of Brookway. And Brookway is 40 feet wide, so the way it is now, even if we moved it to the far right of Brookway, that would still only give her a 25-foot buffer from her property, and it would definitely affect those trees. Now, I'm in the landscape business, my son owns Smithers Landscape in East Bridgewater, and there's no doubt in my mind that if we excavate in that location that's staked out right now, we will impact those trees that are there. So my suggestion is that we move the driveway to the right of Brookway, start it just beyond Brookway, which we own 70 feet of frontage there, that would give us enough room, so we still have room to the right of that to bring the utilities in, yet it would give Carol Jones more of a buffer, and it would hopefully save those, you know, old trees. We certainly want to be a good neighbor, and we want to certainly, you know, save those trees, and, you know, that's what I'd like to do is...
So how much of a shift would that actually be? From, from where, you know, so, so...
So Brookway is 40 feet wide, and if you look at, I actually sent in a little photograph, a little picture here, and if you look at it, the end of the 40-foot width, if we went 15 feet beyond the 40-foot Brookway, that would give us enough room to still have room to put the utilities in, and also it would be away from the canopy of the trees, so if you looked at the picture there, you can actually see, it would be beyond the canopy of the trees, and it would, you know, we wouldn't have to destroy those roots of the trees.
So that would, that would essentially put that, put you 40 feet away from the tree line, in essence.
Exactly, 40 foot from the tree line, and it would give her a 40-foot buffer instead of a 25-foot buffer.
Yeah, so we're talking a 15-foot, 15-foot shift in...
15-foot shift to the right.
Gardner?
So, so are we saying during all this time, during the design, during the original layout and during the original approval, no one thought of this problem?
Yes, I did mention it, and I came back last August and said, we would like to move this, and they said, if you put it probably within that 40-foot buffer, it probably isn't gonna affect those trees, but it, it definitely will affect those trees.
So are the trees within that 40-foot layout? Because we were told in August that they weren't.
Doesn't look like it, it looks like they're right on the edge of it.
The trees are on the edge of the property line. Carol Jones is actually here, and they are on...
All right, but, but, but the 40-foot way is not on the property line, right?
It is, the 40-foot buffer, the 40-foot road starts at her property line and comes 40 feet in, and then we have 38 feet beyond that, we have 78 feet of frontage there. So when it was designed by Silver Engineering, they put it from her stone wall, the stone wall that divides the property there, where the row of trees is, is on the side of the stone wall, on our side of the stone wall. So they're not on her property, they're on the property that we own, but those trees are definitely within that, you know, area that they certainly would be impacted.
See the map here?
Yeah, I have a picture here, if you'd like to see the picture, it's much easier to see.
I've seen it, and I've looked at the site.
This is where we have the proposed driveway, and this is where we would like to move it from. This is her house, and we'd like to save these trees, and if we put the driveway into here, it definitely is gonna impact, it's definitely gonna impact those trees that are there. And we have 78 feet, so our property comes over to here. If you see here, here's where the, the trees are right now, here's where, you know, Brookway actually is, here's her house right here, there's a stone wall right here, and these are the, you know, very mature trees, we'd like to just move it. This is Brookway, stops here, we'd like to put the driveway over here, which gives us enough room to bring the utilities in as well.
So the driveway needs to be in the approved layout.
Right.
The driveway has to be in the approved layout. So if you want to move the driveway, you've got to go back to Mr. Silva and tell him he has to redo the plan and move the, move the layout. We're talking subdivision control. A subdivision control requires that your access be through the approved roadway that was approved by the planning board under subdivision control.
This really isn't gonna be a roadway, though, this is...
Legally, legally, it is a roadway.
But it's never gonna be a roadway, correct?
No, it's approved as a roadway under subdivision control. It's gonna remain in private ownership.
Which is necess, basically, that's necessary to permit you to get the, you know, your, your lot and whatever else, so, I mean, it sounds like an easy fix, and, and maybe it is, but unfortunately, you know, I would agree with Mr. Gardner that... That's the step that has to be taken here. It just has to be.
We can't just, it's not a driveway, that, that's a misnomer under subdivision control. That is a legal roadway. That's where you're getting your legal frontage from. Your access has to be through that legal frontage, which is the roadway that we approved. So you'll, you'll have to actually move the roadway over however many feet you think it needs to be moved, maybe all the way to the other property line.
So that you can, you know, you'd run your utilities or whatever, I mean, whatever, whatever, I mean, Silva can come up with the best, the best idea as to how it would be done, but...
The other option is we can just kill those trees and just...
Well, I mean, you hate to see that happen, obviously, I mean...
Well, exactly, but I don't want to spend hundreds of dollars, thousands of dollars now to have them move a driveway 15 feet over when they could have done that before. And I mean, when you hire these engineers, they really should know that, you know, this could have an impact, and here's the poor neighbors that's right next door that's looking at this, and back last August, I came and said, you know, hey, you know, can we move the driveway, if we put her over here, can you move it within that 40-foot? You could move it there, and it's probably not gonna impact those trees, but it definitely won't impact those trees.
Well, it's a 14-foot driveway, that leaves 26 feet where those trees are, and those trees are in the middle of that 26 feet from the plane we saw originally.
Right, so those trees will be impacted because the root systems is right where we would excavate to put in the base for the driveway.
Not any trees I've ever seen.
These trees are maple trees and...
They're centered in that 26 feet, that's not part of the driveway. So there's 13 to 14 feet away from those trees where you're gonna be excavating the driveway.
It's not 13 to 14 feet, because the trees are actually on our property, on Brook, that's owned by Brookway, so the...
But the untouched part of Brookway is 26 feet wide. Those trees are just slightly over the property line, on your side of that stone wall, right?
Right, they're about 12 feet over the property line where they stop.
So there's another 13 to 14 feet before you get to your driveway.
Right.
Because your driveway is on the far side of Brookway.
Right.
And you're saying excavating 14 feet away from those trees is gonna kill the trees?
Oh...
I don't think so.
These are huge trees, the canopy...
Understand that, but I don't think so.
This lady also wants to speak.
Hi.
Yes.
Trying to help, Norm. Hi, my name's Judith Jones, I live at 368 Plymouth Street, right next to Norm. So for us, or not for me, for the Smiths, to move the driveway over, they need to have Silva Engineering draw up a new plan for a proposed driveway 40 feet over to the right...
Proposed roadway.
Sorry.
Let's use the correct term.
Yeah, right, proposed roadway, 40 feet to the right, and then it would come back to the planning committee to be approved.
Modify the existing plan.
Right, so...
Those plans are recorded at the registry of deeds.
Right, so what we need is not a description of what we want to do, but rather a new blueprint that would show the change.
If you want to physically move that over to the, basically to the other property line?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, so then you would have to go back to Silva Engineering and say that this is what I wanted you to do and you didn't do, so the, we'll need to come back to you whenever the next meeting is with a new blueprint, right?
Assuming that that's what Mr. Smith chooses to do.
Yeah, of course, yes. I know, I'm speaking for him, but I'm trying to help, you know.
So do we have to go to Silver Engineering, or can we just have an engineering company draw a plan that moves the driveway over?
Well, who did the original plan?
Silva Engineering.
And other engineering firm won't touch that. You'll have to go back to Silva Engineering.
So you'll need a modification, you need to...
Certainly, certainly they have, you know, all of the, the data and whatever, I mean, it would be a much easier project for, for them to undertake than it would be, you know, to bring somebody in from the, from the wilderness and let them start all over again, you know?
All right.
Do you see any problems?
Assuming, assuming that that's the way you want to go, I mean, your, your choices are pretty binary, you know, you either A, proceed as it is, keep the driveway over as far as it can go, or B, go through that process. I mean, that's from, from our perspective.
If that blueprint is submitted, do you see a problem with that?
I think the grades are pretty flat there, from what I've seen and what I remember when I walked this way back last June, July, August timeframe, whenever that was.
All right, so it's more of a paperwork problem than...
It's, it's basically a paperwork problem.
Okay.
And, and that problem kind of gets exacerbated by the fact that those documents are recorded at the registry of deed, and theoretically forever, that's where the roadway is, once that document is recorded.
Change need to be submitted and will need to be approved, and then the change can go in, and then the construction can continue.
And the other parts of that is you can't put anything in that roadway other than the roadway.
Right.
Which in this case is, is a maybe slightly glorified driveway, I'll, I'll agree with that, that part, but, under Massachusetts laws, and under the general laws that apply here, which is subdivision control, that is in fact a roadway approved by the town. It's not gonna be accepted by the town. That's an important distinction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Did you have any more questions?
All right.
No?
Thank you, guys.
That's it, thank you.
I've never heard of any trees that are 20 feet away from it. You're going to kill it. But, you know. Such is life, I guess. So.
My money.
Excuse me. Want to take up B2, B3?
Where are we with?
Other, other, third point.
Why don't we look at the Smiths here? Why don't we look at, at 1968, 1972 Plymouth Street?
Okay.
Who's there?
Okay. So we'll go back to A4, Plymouth Street. Mr. Smith is, there we go.
He's here.
Hiding behind the pole.
He's hiding behind the pole.
There you go. Better rates. So this is the new.
Actually, updated plans. I looked at these a few days ago.
Okay, right.
Last Friday morning, I believe it was.
Yep. Which would have the changes that were requested.
Yeah, they're all in the, in the.
The notes.
Page one notes on the left-hand side of the sheets.
Okay. So if that's the case, I had looked at them as well. I think that everything that we discussed at that meeting was incorporated into there. So soon that the, does the office have a Mylar? Yes, or no?
No.
Not yet.
We do have the Mylar.
There we go.
Larry Silva is out of town this week. So the land surveyor stamped and signed it, but his signature is not physically on it yet. He'll be back on Monday.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we endorse the Mylars along with the covenant.
Second.
And that those Mylars be held in the office until such time as Mr. Silva comes back to the office and puts his signature on those. Because we're actually not supposed to sign them without his signature on them. Or we'll hold them in the office until such time as he's back from vacation, come into the office and signs the Mylars.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So based on the changes that have been made to the plan, as was requested, the motion by Mr. Gardner is to approve the endorsement of the Mylars and the covenant for 1968, 1972 Plymouth Street, with the stipulation that those be held pending the endorsement by the engineer who is currently away. And Mr. Heager has seconded that motion as their discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote of all regular members voting this evening. So, done. Okay. So sit there.
Okay. So we can sign those tonight and hold them in the office.
Yeah. So if you give us, or give.
We can just leave the Mylar at the end of the meet, and they'll sign them, and we'll hold them in my office.
Right.
And then the covenant letter has to be signed by the applicants as well?
Yes.
Is that?
So that will be available at the same time that the plan goes to be signed by Mr. Silva. So, yeah, we'll have that.
You say at the same time, we don't have to be there with Larry.
No, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can come in and sign it.
We'll take care of that one. Excuse me.
It'll be in the office, so you can come in and sign it basically anytime. Just an important thing to pay attention to here is that prior to us agreeing to release that subdivision lot, which is the one lot subdivision lot for construction, you'll have to ask us for a lot release. Get that lot released. The first thing we need to see is the recording documentation for the plan and the covenant. So we need to see the book and page information for both of those documents, as well as a copy of the receipt from the registry that references those book and page numbers.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. You can just leave that, if you will, with candy, and we'll be in good shape. Okay. So, Mr. Gardner, B2, B3. Proposed zoning amendments. Just by way of refreshing folks' recollections, we did discuss this prior to the town meeting earlier this year with respect to the B3, was it, Roy, that we did?
I believe it was B3.
B3. And that unfortunately, although we held a public hearing on it and voted in favor of the proposed changes, it did not get into the warrant. So that will be something that comes back again in the fall for consideration. Now, however, the, there has been, I guess, some activity such that we would consider incorporating the B2 zone, the transitional business district, so-called, into the equation as well. So.
So let me try and speak to that a little bit. So.
Go ahead.
In the meantime, since whatever happened, happened, and there was some mixed messages, and we didn't get this on the, on the original annual town meeting warrant, there's a situation that has come up in another existing building, that being building, that building being what formerly was the Compass Medical Center billing offices, which are next door to Superior Pool on Route 18. So Superior Pool is at the corner of Grove Street and Route 18. The Compass Medical Billing Office is the, is the large business, two-story business building that used to be their primary billing offices for probably more than a decade. To make clear to everyone here in the room, I actually am an abutter to that property because I live at 27 Grove Street. It came to my attention through a mailing from the Zoning Board of Appeals and a public notice that the building owners had signed a petition to the Zoning Board of Appeals to issue a special permit for residential apartment use in that building. Now, right now, for that zoning district, which is, I believe, B2, we don't allow mixed uses in the B2 district as it currently stands. I took a look at that building and several other buildings, another one being where the gun shop is, just a little further down on Route 18 in front of what used to be the Foxborough Company property, which also has a long-term on and off vacant second floor. And thought through the process, looked at some other area towns around us, and it seems to make sense that given the current business environment, businesses aren't interested in second-floor space. They want first-floor space in business zones. Multiple other towns around us have adopted what's traditionally referred to as mixed-use zoning, where the first floor is business commercial, the second floor is residential apartments and potentially condos, but almost always apartment buildings. So it seemed to make sense to me that we should use that exact same language and adopt that language for the other business district that falls into that same category. And these are generally relatively shallow districts along numbered routes. Those districts tend to be 200 feet to 250 feet back off the route with the business building. Now, we already heard the proposal from the gentleman that has the special permit for the property down at Route 14 and 27, opposite the gas station just below Ridda's Golf Course. That's where the original proposal came from for the B3 districts. So in my opinion, as a single member of this board, I took it upon myself to go ahead and draft a bylaw which would also fit the B2 category, which is basically an identical bylaw. We've had a small amount of feedback from the fire department and asked to put in basically one sentence to make sure that any building that goes up or any building that's converted over to residential meets all of the current safety codes and building codes. So that will be added to both of these prior to going to our next public hearing. But my thought is we could, we could vote to schedule a public hearing in September for both of these. Because I think by the time September rolls around, we would need a new, a new recommendation anyway, because our recommendation that was going to be for annual town meeting would have effectively, under mass general laws, expired by then.
So your choice would be September 15th or October 6th?
I think to make sure we meet the dates for the potential special town meetings coming in the fall, that we should make it September.
So in the way of a motion, Mr. Gardner, I will resume, is asking that the articles or proposed bylaw amendments to the B2 and B3 zones to allow for second-floor residential mixed use be scheduled for hearing on September 15th, 2025, and we'll say at 7:30 p.m.
Second up motion.
By Mr. Heager. Discussion. There being none, all those in favor of that motion so signified by saying aye.
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 And opposed. Unanimous vote of all members present and voting. Anything else to come before the board this evening? Hearing nothing. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Heager, a second to the motion?
I second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Tedesco. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming. Good night.
We got to sign that, right?